All right, I think we got everybody settled. Good evening. On behalf of Marie Theresa Dominguez, the Commissioner of the New York State Department of Transportation, and Rick Markey, the Administrator for the Federal Highway Administration's New York Division, I welcome you to this I-81 Viaduct Project Public Hearing. My name is Brody Smith, and I am serving as the moderator for this public hearing. A stenographer is seated in front of me. She will record the proceedings of the meeting, and a verbatim transcript will be prepared. I'm going to read an opening statement, which will be followed by a brief prerecorded presentation on the screens you can see to my left and my right. When the presentation is finished, I will begin the moderated oral comment session. The New York State Department of Transportation, in cooperation with the Federal Highway Administration, published a draft design report slash draft environmental impact statement slash draft section 4F evaluation for the I-81 Viaduct Project on July 16, 2021. The project has been advanced in accordance with the requirements of the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA, codified at 40 CFR Parts 1500 through 1508. The Federal Highway Administration Environmental Impact and Related Procedures at final rule 23 CFR Part 771, and the New York State Department of Transportation Procedures for Implementation of the State Environmental Quality Review Act at 17 New York Codes Rules and Regulations Part 15, and in accordance with the provisions of Article 2 of the New York State Eminent Domain Procedure Law. The publication of the DDR/DEIS began the public comment period on the document, which will extend until 5:00 PM Eastern Daylight Time on September 14, 2021. This public hearing is being conducted to obtain comments on the project's DDR/DEIS and the right-of-way acquisition process. The DDR/DEIS is available for reviewing at this hearing on the project's website, www.dot.ny.gov/i81opportunities, and at libraries and other public facilities throughout greater Syracuse. The DDR/DEIS describes the project, the consideration of social, economic, and environmental effects that would result from the implementation of the project, and measures to mitigate adverse effects. The hearing provides the public an opportunity to make formal statements of positions before any project decisions are made. The agencies will review and consider public comments submitted during the established 60-day public comment period. Responses to substantive comments will be included in the project's final design report slash final environmental impact statement, or FDRFEIS, which is anticipated to be published by the end of 2021. If you wish to make an oral statement, you must fill out one of the speaker cards, they look like this, at the registration desk, or welcome table if you've not already done so. Persons may make oral comments in one of two ways. First, if you want to make a comment in front of all the attendees in this room, I will call your name, and you'll come up to the microphone at the appropriate time to give your comments. This microphone right here in front of me. If you prefer to make your comments in private, at any time this afternoon or evening, you can go to the stenographer located in the foyer. So you go to the table, out those doors, and there's a stenographer that can take your statement right there if you'd rather do that. In addition to comments, at this hearing, comments can be accepted in the other following ways. First, written comments can be sent via US mail to Mark Frichette, PE, Project Director, New York State Department of Transportation, Region 3, 333 East Washington Street, Syracuse, New York, 13202. Or Rick Markey, Division Administrator, Federal Highway Administration, Leo W. O'Brien, Federal Building, 11A Clinton Avenue, Suite 719, Albany, New York, 12207. There's an electronic comment form on the project website if you visit at www.dot.ny.gov/i81opportunities. You can email a written comment to i81opportunities@dotny.gov. And finally, if you'd prefer to submit your comment through a voicemail system, you can call the project hotline at I, I should say, 1-855-I81-TALK. That's 855-481-8255. Information on how to submit the written comments is also given, all the information I just gave you before, on the project website. You can elect to submit comments both in person and in writing, both orally and in writing, I should say. Written statements will be given the same weight and consideration as oral statements made at this meeting. Again, public comments will be accepted until 5:00 PM Eastern Daylight Time on February 14, 2021. Before we begin accepting oral comments, we will play a prerecorded presentation about the project. After the presentation, I'll give you instructions on how we plan to take your oral comments.
Welcome to the public hearing for the Interstate 81, or I-81, Viaduct Project Draft Environmental Impact Statement, or DEIS. The public hearing is an opportunity for the public to provide oral testimony on the DEIS. This public hearing will satisfy New York's eminent domain procedure law, or EDPL, public hearing requirements. The New York State Department of Transportation, or NYSDOT, and the Federal Highway Administration, or FHWA, published the project's DEIS on July 16, 2021. This date also marks the start of the DEIS public comment period, which will be open for 60 days through 5:00 PM Eastern Daylight Time on September 14, 2021. The document is available for review on our project website, as well as at local libraries and town halls throughout metropolitan Syracuse. The DEIS documents the evaluation of the project's reasonable alternatives and the social, economic, and environmental effects that would result from the implementation of the alternatives. The following three alternatives were evaluated in the DEIS: the no-build, the viaduct alternative, and the community grid alternative. The no-build alternative serves as the baseline against which the build alternatives are compared. The two build alternatives are the viaduct alternative, which would replace the existing I-81 viaduct with a new viaduct built to current design standards, and the community grid alternative, which would remove the viaduct from the railway bridge near Renwick Avenue to Interstate 690, or I-690, replace it with a city street, and disperse traffic throughout the city street grid. I-81 would be rerouted to Interstate 481, or I-481, under the community grid alternative. NYSDOT has identified the community grid alternative as the preferred alternative because it best meets the project's purpose, objectives, and needs. The project area is located within the municipalities of Syracuse, North Syracuse, Cicero, East Syracuse, and DeWitt in Anandaga County, and it includes portions of I-81, I-690, and I-481. This area includes the southern and northern interchanges of I-81 with I-481, Exit 16A and 29 respectively, the portion of I-81 between approximately East Brighton Avenue and .7 miles north of Hiawatha Boulevard, including the I-81 viaduct, and the I-81-I-690 interchange in downtown Syracuse, the portions of I-690 between Leavenworth Street and Beach Street, and between approximately Hiawatha Boulevard West and Bear Street, and I-481 between New York State Route 5 and the New York State Thruway, I-90. The purpose of the project is to address structural deficiencies and non-standard highway features, while creating an improved transportation corridor through the city of Syracuse that meets the transportation needs and provides the infrastructure to support long-range transportation planning efforts. The project is needed to improve traffic flow and safety, and to address aging infrastructure. There is also a need for transportation infrastructure to support long-range planning efforts to improve pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, and to improve transit amenities. Based on a balanced consideration of the need for safe and efficient transportation, the social, economic, and environmental effects of the project alternatives, and national, state, and local environmental protection goals, the NYSDOT and FHWA have identified the community grid alternative as the project's preferred alternative. The community grid alternative would remove the I-81 viaduct, which is recognized in City of Syracuse and Anandaga County land use plans, as a physical and visual barrier between neighborhoods. The portion of existing I-81 between its northern and southern intersections with I-481 would be re-designated as a business loop of I-81. What is a business loop? According to the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, a business route is "a route principally within the corporate limits of a city, which provides the traveling public an opportunity to travel through that city." A business loop is a route that leads into a downtown business district and returns to the freeway at the other end. Business Loop 81, or BL81, would continue to be a high-speed roadway south of MLK Jr. East and north of I-690. The community grid alternative includes multiple improvements to help disperse traffic and improve access to and from key destinations within downtown Syracuse. For example, the addition of the I-690 interchange at Kraus and Irving Avenues would create a new point of access to University Hill. Removal of the elevated West Street overpass and ramps to and from I-690 would re-establish connectivity between downtown and the near west side. The alternative also includes a new northbound exit from BL81 to Colvin Street to provide a direct link from the south to University Hill. The community grid alternative would create the potential for a canal district, offering opportunities for new and enhanced public spaces as a result of the removal of transportation infrastructure associated with I-81 and its interchanges. The removal of transportation infrastructure would also allow for the creation of new gateways to neighborhoods, including MLK Jr. East, where a roundabout would be built, and at Van Buren Street. The removal of infrastructure in the West Street area would allow for the creation of a new path along the west bank of Anandaga Creek, between Erie Boulevard and Evan Street, providing access to views, which are currently obstructed, of a historic Erie Canal aqueduct and stone bridge over the creek. Improvements to BL81 and I-690 would be made to increase capacity and improve traffic operations. These include a new lane added to the northern segment of BL81, from I-690 to Hiawatha Boulevard, new on-and-off ramps at Bear Street, and reconstruction of I-690 from Leavenworth Avenue to Beach Street. The community grid alternative would improve key connections between neighborhoods and key destinations, and introduce a host of bicycle and pedestrian amenities, including wider sidewalks, cycle tracks, and shared use, or bicycle and pedestrian paths, curb bumpouts to reduce pedestrian crossing distance, and landscaped medians for pedestrian refuge. These features would improve mobility and accessibility for pedestrians and cyclists, including the elderly and transit users. The community grid alternative would remove the viaduct and reconstruct Almond Street as a signalized city street for vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists, and enhance neighborhood connectivity. The build alternatives would include improvements to Wilson Park. During construction, the contractor could use a .12 acre portion of this 2.1 acre park, which is adjacent to and beneath the I-81 viaduct for construction staging. To protect the public during construction, NYSDOT would close the sidewalk, as well as an adjacent piece of parkland, and provide a temporary walkway with adequate space and protection from construction. NYSDOT will require the contractor to secure access to the restricted area to protect public safety. The park currently has two basketball courts, and two courts will be maintained during construction. After construction, the park would have three courts, benches, new shade trees, a new water fountain in the basketball court area, new pavement for access from Jackson Street, and new fences, a graded and reseated lawn area, pedestrian gates, and parking improvements. These improvements were developed in coordination with the city and the Parks Department, as well as Syracuse Housing The community grid would reconstruct portions of I-481, which would be designated as the new I-81, and brought up to current interstate design standards. Improvements include adding lanes where needed between I-690 and I-90. The new northbound I-81 would be expanded from two to three lanes. Between Kirkville Road and I-690, the new southbound I-81 would be expanded from two to three lanes. The project would also reconfigure the southern and northern interchanges with I-81, and make various improvements to Interchange 3 and New York State Routes 5 and 92. The Interchange 3 improvements were developed as a result of public comments, as was the new design for the southern interchange. Neither build alternative would adversely affect air quality. NYSDOT is proposing to construct 15 noise barriers under either build alternative to abate traffic noise impacts. By removing the viaduct, the community grid alternative would allow daylighting of areas that are currently cast in shadows, and would create extended views to surrounding areas, resulting in beneficial visual effects. The community grid alternative's impacts to wetlands and other habitats would be mitigated through measures such as stream, culvert, and flood plan restoration. The community grid alternative would also address climate change with the construction of a new storm sewer trunk line, which would provide increased capacity for stormwater, and reduce the load on the city's combined sewer system. The community grid alternative would require acquisition of four commercial buildings. No residential or historic buildings would be acquired. The viaduct alternative would require the acquisition of 24 commercial and residential buildings, including 11 historic The beneficial and adverse effects of the project would be fairly distributed within the affected environmental justice and non-environmental justice communities. FHWA and NYSDOT conducted a detailed economic study to investigate the potential effects on businesses of traffic rerouting under the community grid alternative. The study found that changes in traffic under the community grid alternative would have only a small effect on highway-dependent businesses along I-81 north of downtown Syracuse. Many of these businesses, like Destiny USA and Hotels, are somewhat resilient to changes in traffic because they are planned destinations for travelers rather than spontaneous stops along the way. The study also found that differences in travel times would not substantively alter local consumer behavior. The community grid would result in approximately 10 to 12-point acres of surplus property, depending on how much land would be needed to accommodate the highway, sidewalk, shared use, bicycle and pedestrian path, and other transportation NYSDOT will determine the size and location of the surplus transportation right-of-way parcels once construction is complete. NYSDOT will form a land use working group consisting of representatives from the city, the city school district, economic development and economic opportunity organizations, the business community, environmental justice communities, neighborhood residents, and other organizations and stakeholders as appropriate, to provide input to NYSDOT in establishing a framework for the non-transportation use of each potential surplus parcel. The viaduct alternative would not result in surplus property. Construction of the viaduct alternative would take six years and would cost $2.2 billion, whereas the community grid alternative would take five years and would cost $1.9 billion. To mitigate the adverse effects of construction activities on the community, NYSDOT will require its contractors to comply with measures to minimize or otherwise mitigate effects. These measures will address traffic diversions, dust and debris, increase in emissions and noise, and access to businesses and residences. There will be community engagement throughout construction. Together, these measures would help reduce adverse effects during the construction The community grid alternative would require the acquisition of four commercial buildings, as well as portions of land from approximately 140 commercial and residential properties. The majority of property acquisitions would be within the city of Syracuse, with the remaining acquisitions occurring in the towns of Cicero and DeWitt. NYSDOT's Office of Right-of-Way would acquire real estate needed for the project in accordance with the eminent domain procedure law. The acquisition process will follow five steps, which include: 1. Contacting the property owner to schedule a property inspection at the owner's convenience. During the property inspection, the department will provide the owner with a copy of the acquisition map, informational packets, and encourage owner involvement. 2. Appraising the property to determine just compensation due to the property owner. 3. Making an offer of compensation of the fully approved value, either in person or by certified mail. 4. Legally acquiring the property, which occurs once the acquisition map is filed with the county clerk's office. And 5. Paying the property owner. If a property acquisition requires relocation of businesses or residences, NYSDOT's Office of Right-of-Way will work with the occupants to make their relocation as accommodating as practical. The relocation assistance program includes moving and re-establishment expenses or a payment in lieu of moving expenses. To be eligible for relocation benefits, owners must complete negotiations with the Office of Right-of-Way prior to moving. No side occupants will be required to move without at least 90 days' written notice. Informational booklets on the property acquisition and relocation processes, including contact information should you have questions, are available at the project's virtual information room and at the in-person meeting at the ON Center. Identifying the job skills needed on large projects like I-81 and providing the job readiness and training for those jobs is ongoing. NYSDOT's goal is to have a local workforce ready to work when the project starts. NYSDOT has partnered with the New York State Department of Labor to create the Workforce Forward Syracuse Program. This program would help train and connect local workers with the jobs that would be involved with the I-81 project. NYSDOT has a program running at SUNY Educational Opportunity Center, EOC, called Work Smart New York, that helps give local residents the skills they need to work on DOT construction projects. We also have been collaborating with the City of Syracuse and Syracuse Build on the new pathways to apprenticeship in an effort to give local residents training in construction skills. NYSDOT continues to work with the community to develop a local hiring goal through the FHWA SEP-14 application. This application would ensure that members of the local community have the greatest opportunity to work directly on the I-81 project. We will have both virtual and in-person hearings where individuals can provide oral comments. Both hearings will be livestreamed on the project's YouTube page. The virtual hearing will take place on August 17 at 11:00 AM and 5:00 PM ET. Attendees of the virtual hearing can request to submit oral comments when they register for the hearing via Zoom. The in-person hearing will take place on August 18 at the ON Center from 3:30 PM to 8:30 PM. Attendees of the in-person hearing can provide oral comments to the audience, or dictate them privately to a stenographer. You may also submit your comments in writing via the project website, www.i81opportunities.org, or by writing to us via regular mail. In addition, you may call our project hotline and leave your comment as a voice message. Please note that all comments received, whether orally or in writing, electronically, or in person, will be given an equal level of We want to emphasize the importance of the public's feedback, and encourage you to submit your comments and questions. We look forward to hearing from you. To learn more about the alternatives and the project effects, please visit our virtual information room. The room contains display boards, presentations, and videos about the Thank you for watching this presentation, and please continue to participate in the I-81 Viaduct Project.
Okay. I will now introduce the representatives of the New York State Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration that are in attendance today for this hearing. Immediately to my left is Mark Frichette. He's the Project Director, New York State Department of Transportation. And to his left is Rick Markey. He's the Division Administrator for the Federal Highway Administration for this region. My role as the hearing moderator is to provide members of the public an opportunity to provide comments in an organized, fair, professional, and orderly matter. The testimony is being recorded by a stenographer, as I mentioned before, right in front of me, so please state your name, and spell it, and identify any organizations that you represent before you begin speaking. To ensure that everybody gets a chance to speak, comments will be limited to three minutes. And that time will start after you introduce yourself. While you spell your name, I'm not going to have your time start. I'll provide you a verbal warning when 30 seconds remain in your time. Agency representatives will not be answering questions or responding to comments during the hearing. Responses to substantive comments that you make will be included in the final environmental impact statement slash FDR. Just a reminder, if you wish to make an oral statement, you must fill out one of the speaker cards at the registration desk. They look like this. And also, before we begin the comment period, I'd like to recognize some elected officials or their representatives who are present here today. All but one of these people already spoke at the 4 o'clock meeting. City of Syracuse, the mayor, the Honorable Ben Walsh; New York State Senate, District 53, Senator Rachel May; Anandaga County Legislature for the 5th District, the Honorable Deborah Cody; Anandaga County Legislature for the 7th District, the Honorable Mary Kuhn; Townes Lineas Supervisor, the Honorable Colleen Gunup; and the mayor of the village of Fayetteville, the Honorable Mark Olson. At this time, we will hear from those who wish to make oral statements. In accordance with the agency's policies, elected and appointed officials will be given the first opportunity to speak. Others will be called to make their statement in the order that they registered. I will call two names at a time, so that you can, one person can be at the microphone, and the next person can be waiting behind them, in order to speed things up and for us to get through this efficiently as possible. Also, I wanted to mention that there are, if you visit the table after the comment period, for those of you who use public transportation to get here, there's bus passes available. I'm going to apologize in advance if I mispronounce anybody's name. Our first speaker will be Mary Kuhn, and Mary Kuhn will be followed by... And Mary Kuhn will be followed by Michael Parzick.
Good evening. My name is Mary Kuhn, K-U-H-N. I'm an Onondaga County legislator and my district includes both suburban and urban parts. Today, I'm representing the Moving People Transportation Coalition. I first want to say that I strongly support the community grid as the only just option for replacing the I-81 viaduct, which has divided our city for over 60 years. The community grid is essential for social, racial, and environmental justice for the citizens of our city. Reconnecting our neighborhoods will lead to a stronger and more vibrant urban center, which benefits not only the city of Syracuse, but all the towns and villages that comprise Onondaga County. Health and safety issues need to be a priority along the street grid that is being proposed. We do not want the designation of "Business Loop 81" because it allows for truck traffic on 12-foot wide lanes. We believe that the community grid should be referred to as "Just That", a community grid that works to connect and reconnect neighborhoods. This should not be a speedy way to get through our city. Lanes should be no wider than 11 feet once I-81 comes to grade, and the speed limit should be no greater than 30 miles per hour. This provides for the health and safety of pedestrians and bicyclists. Regarding the air quality during demolition and reconstruction, New York State DOT should use input from multiple sources, including residents and experts on the ground, to constantly monitor the air quality, especially for the citizens who will continue to live in proximity to this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kuhn. The next speaker will be Michael Parzick. Mr. Parzick will be followed by Joss Willsborough.
Okay.
You may begin.
Okay. Two things. The first one's real easy. No matter what you do with making 481-81, a lot of people going to the fairgrounds are still going to end up going on the old 81 through Almond Street. So make sure you have good, permanent, year-round signs all the way all through downtown for people to get to the fairgrounds. So that's an easy one. The second one, back when they built 690 and 41, and it's still there today, they put an exit ramp for the extension of 690 out towards Fayetteville. But they never built it. I think maybe Wegmans didn't want people to have a shortcut. But anyways, you're still going to try to put more and more traffic at the DeWitt exit. And one good accident at the DeWitt exit can close off both north and south exit ramps. Why don't you guys extend 690 at least an off-ramp to Burdick Street? Now, since the 1960s, back then Burdick Street was a two-lane country road. Now it's a three-lane commercial road from Erie Canal, where 690 would come in just north of the Erie Canal, I believe, was the plan. And they just rebuilt Erie Canal Bridge to three lanes. And going from there into Fayetteville, it's now a commercial road. Hardly any houses left. They just tore another one down this spring. It's a commercial road. And I don't understand why you keep wanting to put more traffic into the DeWitt exit, into that Linden Corners, when I believe you still own the right-of-way over to Burdick and you could put at least an off-ramp there and have it end at Burdick. And if that works, then down the road, you can put an entrance ramp with it to go back to 690. But it just seems like since the 1960s, there's probably almost 400 or 500% more people living in Fayetteville, Manlius, and Chetnango.
30 seconds.
And you need another way for them to get there besides Linden Corners and the DeWitt exit. And I just don't understand why you don't do that. It's part of this, at least an exit ramp. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parzick. Next to speak is Joss... I'm sorry, Joss Willsborough. And following Joss Willsborough will be Eric Meeker.
Yeah, my name is Joss Willsborough, spelled J-O-S-S-W-I-L-L-S-B-R-O-U-G-H. I am a resident of the city of Syracuse, a representative of Planned Parenthood, and I stand today here in full solidarity and support of the comments and concerns of the Urban Jobs Task Force and the New York Civil Liberties Union. Some specific concerns: Eight acres of the land directly east of Martin Luther King Boulevard should be given back to city residents living closest to the viaduct in the form of a community-owned land trust to protect the land from gentrification and as reparations for the complete destruction of the old 15th Ward as a result of the original viaduct. Additionally, the maximum possible percentage of I-81 construction work hours should be reserved for available Syracuse City residents under SEP-14, the local hiring pilot program, with no less than 30% higher for Syracuse City residents and 30% people of color. This must be overseen by an independent compliance officer who should not only collect detailed data on workforce hours and demographics, but should also regularly provide full disclosure of this workforce data to the public, including the Urban Jobs Task Force. And the entrance ramp must be moved as far away from possible... as possible from Dr. King Elementary School, but no less than 600 feet. The comments and concerns of the Urban Jobs Task Force and New York Civil Liberties Union reflect years' worth of community engagement, research, and empathetic listening to those who have been most adversely impacted by the viaduct. The I-81 rebuild will most directly impact those living closest to the viaduct. And we cannot hope to advance an equitable future for our community nor pretend as if we are making sound infrastructural decisions if we do not listen deeply and seriously to the concerns of those who have for generations paid the price of the unjust decisions surrounding the original construction of the I-81 viaduct. Thus, I would like to conclude by emphasizing that the I-81 redesign is a matter of reparative justice. And as a resident of this city, I expect that the final environmental impact statement reflects this.
Thank you. The next speaker is Eric Meeker, followed by Quinn Yang Liu.
Thank you for all being here today. I want to thank the panel. And I want to thank for the Department of Transportation and for your service to your country. And I'm glad I'm finally able to speak today. And the reason why I'm here today is to come up with a... It's a fourth proposal. That's a totally different concept than anything you have ever heard yet. This is an indoor, all-transportation biosphere. And if you look at any... Look at some of the airports, major airports around the world, you'll see some of these various structures that they have. And what this is, this is going to be an all-transportation indoor facility. It's going to be a biosphere that's going to come down like this and it's going to have concrete walls that come down. You're going to have balconies that walk along the hole outside of it. It's going to have... We'll actually have lights on it so you can walk outside with overhangs that actually protect you. You're going to be able to travel inside this thing and never leave your car. You're going to be transported with a mezzanine-type levels on each side. And there's also going to be lower levels on the side. Now, the way the vehicles will be traveling through here is they're going to be enclosed in an actual... Almost you can call it plexiglass, but it's going to be an enclosure. To address a lot of these environmental issues that you have, it's also going to be vented. So when they drive through and they're going through the city, that's going to be collected and it's going to be filtered. So you'll never have that out into the city. You won't have the noise either because it's going to be enclosed. Now, the structure that's going to be built like that with a mezzanine level is you're going to be able to walk across that. And you're also going to be able to have businesses up there. Okay? So say you're going to go to an SU game and you can stop at the SU pub up there in a bar up at the top of the mezzanine level. And you can have a few drinks before you go to the game. You could travel anywhere within this, from all the way down to Brighton exit, all the way down to the airport. You could get off the airport and you come into town because you're from North Carolina and you come to games at the Dome. You could travel on a shuttle within this transportation thing on the lower level and the upper level. And you're going to have tram rides, so they're going to take you everywhere in this. You could spend a week's vacation to this. And you could go anywhere. You could go to the Iberston Museum. You can go to the NBT.
30 seconds.
You could go to the Destiny USA. You can go to the hospitals. Okay, within this thing too, I got to make sure I go faster because we only got so much time. But there also will be emergency lanes underneath this. And they're only emergency for emergency vehicles to go on. They got their own lane. And the medium of this is going to be utility facilities. And also, to do business ideas, on the outside of this, on the very outside, you're going to have half-moon cul-de-sacs that the city can rent out. And they can actually rent them and look whatever business idea that you want to do. You're selling crafts or whatever. But you can also rent out spaces on the inside of the facility. So you're going to have an all-purpose indoor, all-transportation biosphere.
Mr. Meeker, I need you to finish your thought. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. My name is Eric, E-R-I-C, Meeker, M-E-A-K-E-R. But there's more. And I just want to say one more, a few more things. I have some really substantial business ideas.
Mr. Meeker. Actually, I'd encourage you to put it in writing. We'd love to hear your thoughts writing. Or if you'd like to give an additional statement, there's a stenographer in the lobby. Next to speak is Quinn Yang Liu, followed by Kayla Johnson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Qing Yang Liu, spelled as Q-I-N-G-Y-A-N-G-L-I-U. I'm a resident in the city of Syracuse. Thank you all for the hearing section and the presentation. I want to raise forth the concern to the current community grid alternative plan. First, I'm concerning about the environmental effect, including the noise, air quality during construction time. The time for the construct and reconstruct for the Almond Street and remove the current I-81 bridge will be last for two years. It will be continuing negative impact for the residential area, including Jefferson Tower, Mason Tower, and the Upstate Domitary. The current presentation do not project any negative influence on these residential areas. Second, the current community grid alternative plan do not address any negative noise effect after the Business Loop is building. Based on the projection in the community plan, after the Business Loop is building up, the noise in the Almond Street and Thompson Street will be higher up to 54, and it do not address anything in the projection. Third, I'm concerning about the traffic change in the community. The rebuild of the Business Loop will be taken up for two years in the construct and reconstruct in the Almond Street. During the construction stage, it will cause a heavy traffic stress to the Almond Street, Adams Street, and the Harren Street nearby. But the current projection do not address any negative issues in right now. Lastly, I'm very concerning about the continuity of the current pandemic situation. During the uncertainty of the Delta variant, I do not know how does the project stage of the construction can be continued and then it doesn't address at all in the current presentation. To conclude, as a resident in the city of Syracuse, I would want to see the final projection, including audio broadly in the environmental effect. Those be all of my concerns. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Liu. Next to speak is Kayla Johnson, followed by Hassan Bloodworth. Kayla Johnson? Okay. I'm going to set Kayla aside here. If she shows up, I'll try to recall her later. Next, Hassan Bloodworth. Is Hassan Bloodworth present? Okay. Ron Van Norstrand? Is Ron Van Norstrand present? Tom Law? Following Tom Law will be Deborah Smith.
Tom Law, T-O-M-L-A-W.
Go ahead and begin when you're ready, sir.
Yes. First, a comment on what you're up against here. It's an imposing document by the DOT. About 1,000 pages plus about 300 figures. Would take you reading about 40 pages a day for the last month to get through it. Not less thinking about it. Not less trying to create from it or thoroughly analyze it. So the DOT is in the driver's seat with this in terms of... There's been a lot of time considering, but a lot of it's done in the back room. And there's been a lot of inputs. So what you're up against is, let's say, a million people in this region, this empty York Market region, their eyes and their desires. But this has to do with cars and people's presence. And a lot of people love their car, which I gave up about a year ago and use the bus, walking quite a bit, and bicycles. Because I have been driving for about 40 years. Meaning, catch this, this is your takeaway, my general audience. One gallon of gasoline creates about 19.2 pounds of carbon dioxide. Each one of you and me, I've created over 150,000 pounds of carbon dioxide. That's a lot. Multiply it by a billion cars now and think that nothing is happening. Something is happening. The externalities, I'm speaking here today a bit about the commons. The externalities, well, the electric car, first of all, I haven't heard it much discussed tonight. A lot of people have talked about pollution. So where does that put our mindset? Puts our mindset locked into the last 20 years. Not locked into the next 20 years. It doesn't really consider the width of the highways in terms of GPS. It doesn't seem to me that if GPS becomes a standard and a car is five and a half feet wide...
30 seconds.
Pardon me?
30 seconds.
Okay. That the width of the roads comes in here. So we've got the invisibles, two other things. Acid rain hasn't been discussed in this. Charles Driscoll, and this is going to go a little bit away with the electric car. But also, carbon monoxide has been locked into people's veins because it unites with hemoglobin for about seven weeks. Okay. My final thing here is, the old concrete could be used to line the Inner Harbor Canal. There's plenty of room to stockpile it down there. And where else is it going to go? It probably doesn't have a lot of chemicals, and I've done here, a lot of chemicals that would leach into the water because it's old concrete, probably didn't have a lot of adjuvants.
Mr. Law, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I have to ask you to finish your thought.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next to speak is Deborah Smith, followed by Hillary Warner.
Good evening, Deborah, D-E-B-R-A, Smith, S-M-I-T-H. Thank you for being here this evening to listen to our cries and our concerns. I am here not as representing an organization, but I'm here representing a small neighborhood that is right adjacent from Dr. King's school. that is right adjacent from Dr. King School where you will be putting the roundabout. I implore you, people have talked about opening up health centers and doing testing. What good is testing if you're dying from COPD, if you're dying from diseases related to the construction? I bought my house, I'm a homeowner. We're between two major housing projects. It's about 11 people, homeowners in that area. And I implore you, and I would pray that you not only hear us or listen, but you hear us, to move that roundabout. It is a concern. That is a heavily area of children that play there, that go to school at Dr. King, that reside there. We have, I have environmental concerns, concerns of construction, when you tear down, when you rebuild, the noise concern, barriers will not take away all of the noise. And I pray that you will reconsider from a humanitarian point of view and not from just dollars and cents. We're talking about our lives down there. We lived here, I am a hardworking woman. I've been on my job 36 years. And when I bought that house 28 years ago, I bought it in good faith through the city of Syracuse, through Rebuild Syracuse, to try to keep that area revitalized and build up. You can't put a roundabout in a neighborhood, a neighborhood with children and families. And I implore you to reconsider moving that roundabout to a less congested, a less area that's not a neighborhood area, West Street in that area. Or down Brighton area is another consideration. But I'm praying and asking you to please reconsider moving that roundabout to another location that where it's not heavily congested with children. Thank you for your time, and I pray that you consider that.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. The next speaker will be Hillary Warner, followed by Petrona Jones Rousier.
Good evening. My name is Hillary. Can you hear me? Is this okay? Good evening. My name is Hillary Warner. That's H-I-L-L-A-R-Y-W-A-R-N-E-R. And I was born and raised in Syracuse. I support all comments made by the New York Civil Liberties Union and Urban Jobs Task Force. I support the community grid, and when it gets built, I strongly urge the New York State Department of Transportation to address the serious inequities and economic harms from the I-81 viaduct for the surrounding environmental justice communities. One way to do this is by giving a percentage of the I-81 construction work hours to available Syracuse residents to the greatest extent possible. The maximum work hours should go to hiring local Syracuse residents who are trained for work on I-81, and there are plenty who are. Now that the SEP 14 program has been reinstated by President Biden's administration, there's really no excuse. High-paying jobs that are going to happen in the city of Syracuse deserve to go to the many capable city residents. I also ask the New York State Department of Transportation to contract a third party to monitor data on workforce hours and demographics to ensure goals are met and overall transparency is taking place by sharing this data with the public and the Urban Jobs Task Force. Finally, a roundabout within 100 feet of Martin Luther King Elementary School is totally unacceptable. It must be moved at least 600 feet from the school. Please further, further than that, much further. And those are all my comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. Next to speak is Petrona Jones Rousier, followed by Charlene Tarver. Is Ms. Rousier present? Ms. Rousier? If no, is Charlene Tarver ready to speak? Floor is yours, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Charlene Tarver. That's T-A-R-V, like Victor, E-R. I am a returning resident to the city of Syracuse. My family has resided on the South Side. We actually have more than four generations, born and raised on the South Side. My family has lived on the South Side more than 50 years, and my mother and family continue to live in the same home on West Calvin Street. There is an obvious need to undo the racial segregation created by redlining in Syracuse and enforced by the viaduct. There is also a dire need to address the economic injustice and the severe poverty, specifically on the South Side. According to the 2010 census, Syracuse had and continues to have the highest concentration of African-American and Latino poverty in the nation despite being in one of the wealthiest states in the nation. And Syracuse has been ranked amongst the 10 worst cities in the nation for African-Americans. A report by the Urban Jobs Task Force and Legal Services of Central New York determined that 88% of the workers that work on public construction sites in Syracuse are white, and very few of those are actually residents of the city of Syracuse. I applaud the Department of Transportation for acknowledging the need for a land use working group. I applaud you for being here today. I support the community grid. However, I think it is very imperative that we address the local hiring issue and that we ensure that SEP 14 allows more African-Americans to be working in this community and more local residents to be working under the construction of the I-81. I think it's also important that we emphasize the priority in establishing a land trust that will address some of the historic injustices that have happened specifically against African-American people with the destruction of Ward 15. More than 90% of the children that are at the STEAM school are black. More than 90% of the children that are at the STEAM school reside in poverty, and this is an opportunity to address those injustices. I think it is also imperative for the DOT to extend the comment period here by six months. If you look around you, there are a number of residents that are not here today because they are not fully aware of what is happening with this project. So I would implore you to continue the comment period. You have released a report with more than 28,000 pages. Please give this community an opportunity to digest and be able to evaluate what your report means and how it will actually impact their day-to-day lives. I would also suggest that the STEAM school be moved more than 600 feet from the on-ramp and that the roundabout there not be placed in that community, given some of the concerns that have already been expressed. I support the comments of the New York Civil Liberties Union as well as the Urban Jobs Task Force. And again, urge you to utilize this opportunity as a time to address some of the systemic and historical social, economic, racial, and environmental injustices that have happened in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tarver. Next to speak is Aggie Lane, followed by Deka Dancil.
Can you switch that order?
Sure. Deka, are you ready? Aggie, you'll be next.
I want to start off with a thanks to the DOT. I think about four years ago, Urban Jobs Task Force had come out talking about these thousands of good-paying jobs that were going to be coming to the city of Syracuse and that we wanted local hire. It's been a hard and rough journey, but I will say that throughout that journey, the DOT has given us a seat at the table, has listened to us, and I hope that through the collaborative process in creating a SEP 14 application, that what the Urban Jobs Task Force and this community at large is asking for will be implemented, right? Because we know nothing is, nothing is set in stone until we get it in writing, right? But I do want to say thank you for your willingness to work with us up until this point. So that's the first thing. Second thing I want to say is, also, I didn't say who I am. My name is Deka Dancil. I'm a resident of the city of Syracuse, born and raised. I'm a homeowner, I'm a voter, I'm a South Side resident, and I'm the president of Urban Jobs Task Force. My name is, my real name is Thandeka, so my voter name, T-H-A-N-D-E-K-A-H. My last name is Dancil, D-A-N-C-I-L. So I also want to say, Urban Jobs Task Force and myself personally as a resident, we support the community grid. We think it's the best option. There's been many people here that have spoken on our demands for jobs. We want to see the largest amount possible of jobs be for local people. And when we say local, we don't mean Anadaga County, we mean the city of Syracuse. As people have shared and have referenced our report today, I'm not going to spend too much time on that because I'm going to submit some written comments. But I want to talk about two other things that I think is really important based on some of the other comments that I've heard thus far. One is about the land. So we fully support, and we are in coalition with the NYCLU, hoping for eight acres of that land that's going to come back to be put into a community land trust. I also applaud this land trust working use group. However, I want to urge and advise the DOT to not allow for the community grid to become a sweetheart deal. If you leave it in the hands of stakeholders of economic development in our city as of right now, the area will be gentrified, right? This same group of stakeholders, including our Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Committee, CIDA, OSIDA, I can go on and on. Everybody who has their hands involved in economic development has created one, and has perpetuated one of the most egregious economic landscapes that we've seen in our state that values, that values, I'm going to say, that values developers over people, right? So that has been something that Urban Jobs Task Force has been following. So I urge you, right? And they have done this through tax break after tax break.
Thirty seconds.
Through pilot after pilot in the form of sweetheart deals that does not benefit our residents. The last thing I'm going to say about gentrification is this community is not confused. We remember what happened in the 50s and 60s and we see it about to happen again. We all sit up here looking at an apple and you trying to tell me that we looking at an orange. You're redoing public housing. You're going to open up land for redevelopment, urban renewal. You're redoing public housing, redlining. I-81 is happening again, community grid. Please do not repeat history. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dancil. Next to speak is Aggie Lane, followed by Robert Sarason.
My name is Aggie Lane, and it's A-G-G-I-E-L-A-N-E. And I'm a resident of the southwest side of Syracuse, and I'm a board member of the Urban Jobs Task Force. And for the last 10 years, the Urban Jobs Task Force has been fighting for economic inclusion for city residents, and especially when there are projects using public money. So we've got I-81 project, $2 billion of public money, and we've got over 7 million work hours. The city residents must benefit from that project. So we are asking that the New York State DOT mandate a percentage of the work hours for city residents. In the past, when the Urban Jobs Task Force has urged a city resident hiring mandate, naysayers would start questioning whether the city has the skilled workers to fulfill a city resident hiring goal. Of course it does. That is, if the goal is realistic. So over the last decade, the Joint School Construction Board project has trained and hired city workers to meet its 20% city resident goal. Over two years, this $300 million school renovation project hired close to 700 workers from the city, many of them having the skills the I-81 project needs, like laborers and carpenters. The Joint School Construction Project will be finishing up next year, just when the I-81 project begins. What a great opportunity to keep these skilled city tradespeople working. Besides setting aside a percentage of the work hours for city residents, the New York State DOT must put resources behind the I-81 hiring goals by contracting, one, a compliance monitor who would report at least quarterly to the public.
Thirty seconds.
And two, a jobs coordinator who would help connect contractors to city construction workers. And finally, the New York State DOT should consider training and placing city residents through its on-the-job training program. To successfully accomplish this, the New York State DOT must first set a work hour goal for the OJT program. Colorado DOTs did just that on its billion-dollar I-70 project. It mandated 200,000 OJT hours, and the project excited it by 30%. Our last sentence. So what does economic justice look like? Many city residents taking home a paycheck earned in their backyard on the I-81 project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Next to speak is Robert Sarason, followed by Robert Haley.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Sarason. That's S-A-R-A-S-O-N. I live in DeWitt. I am also a member of the Social Action Committee of Temple Concord. As a suburbanite, out of pure naked interest, I fully support the community grid, since if the city of Syracuse thrives, the suburbs will also become a better place to work and live. Almost 50 years ago, I completed a four-year apprenticeship in printing. After completing college and law school, I spent a substantial amount of my working life as a union lawyer and a union organizer. I strongly believe the labor movement has made substantial improvements in the way of life for both union and non-union families. Nonetheless, one glaring injustice is that the number of African-Americans and other peoples of color in the building trades is incredibly low. While one could point one's finger exclusively at the building trade unions, what about the general contractors, the subcontractors, the politicians, the government, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? Rather than focus on the blaming game, we should focus on solutions. Rabbi Abraham Joshua Heschel, a very close ally and friend of Dr. Martin Luther King, once said the following, "Few are guilty, all are responsible." Two fundamental solutions. Institute the federally funded SEP 14, like local 14, higher program that provides Syracuse residents and people of color opportunities to get federal construction jobs. Two, a CWA, Community Workforce PLA, Project Labor Agreement that would provide community work opportunities and trade union work opportunities. We have heard positive words of encouragement from many politicians, governmental officials, private nonprofit sectors of the economy, and yes, the building trade unions themselves. The words of Secretary Buttigieg are encouraging. There are two ingredients that are missing. The commencement of significant training now, before the construction begins, and real numbers to have a successful plan. Particularly, I point to the importance of apprenticeship ratios, apprenticeship goals, real numbers. Till 690, 4.4, that's pathetic. You can go up to 20%. And why don't we have those numbers?
Thirty seconds.
We need those numbers. Apprenticeships should go to people in the area so that after the construction project, they can have real jobs. Apprenticeships are the gateway to a middle-class decent lifestyle. In closing, the I-81 project could demonstrate that lip service to fair employment practices without real without real numbers is a formula for failure. Numbers with meaningful, real, independent, and transparent compliance, requiring real numbers could demonstrate to the nation that the I-81 project is a model of economic and racial justice. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Robert Haley, followed by Donna Curtin.
Yes, thank you. My name is Robert Haley, H-A-L-E-Y. Thank you for this hearing. It's good to see you. It's good to see both the DOT and the FHA here. It's interesting, we're hearing a lot today from community organizations because of this project. We are here today, I'm with the American Institute of Architects, a local chapter. We've been working on this for over 10 years with both on the I-81 project in terms of our community and building our community as a better place. We are fully in support of the community grid as the preferred option by the DOT in this project. And we can say that having studied it thoroughly in all aspects of a sustainable community for the future. It is interesting that the last, even though we've had pauses in this project, how the project has evolved to new horizons and new visions and new solutions because of the delays. And we are at that point today. You've heard a lot today from individuals, all aspects, and many of these ideas might seem new, but they come from the roots of a community stirred by a major transportation infrastructure in the city of Syracuse. When Secretary Buttigieg and our senators came here, they were enthusiastic about this being, this project being where it is, on the edge of going forward as a community healing project. And yes, it's transportation and traffic, but the roots are as deep as everything you've heard today. I would like to make a couple of specific comments that we will then follow up in September 14th. Regarding the, the project overall is 90% in very good shape in terms of traffic, commuters, commerce, and transportation, and that is about 10% lacking. That 10% lacking is in the section through the downtown and residential neighborhoods in the city of Syracuse, south of 690, all the way down to 481. I caution especially the federal overview on this, in the sense that in the 60s, a decision was made to make judgments about valid communities and where opportunities could be taken from sections of our city. That should not be the rationale used today to still think that certain parts of the city are less important than others. As an example, the business loop, as it's termed, if that presently is charged to do higher highway traffic for larger truck capacity, wider lanes, as same design criteria is on the 90% of the high-speed highways outside, outside the center of the city. We're advocating strongly for city streets that are a large city street, but in fact, a planned city street for future growth for 50 years. This is the next plan for 50 years. Yeah, 30 seconds, and here I go. Thank you. It's essential that the lanes come from 12 feet down to 11 feet. It is also essential in terms of long-term planning that we get so much of the green space on either side of these images back to the city tax base. The almond ab should be between 115 to 125 feet maximum width, all the way from 690 to 481, and it should be planned for available, return that land to the tax base, thank you, for future economic growth for a sustainable community. Further comments will follow. Thank you.
Next to speak is Donna Curtin, followed by Giovanni Buzile. Buzile, sorry for that. Donna Curtin? Giovanni Buzile? Casey Mann? Following Mr. Mann will be Peter King.
Hello, my name is Keith Mann. I'm a resident of the south side. I'm a longtime, lifelong resident of the city of Syracuse. And my last name is spelled Mann, M-A-N-N. I see everybody here as a proponent of this community grid. I'm looking at right now, I don't know what you people think you're looking at, but there's one parked car, one moving car, one bus. That's a joke. This is not a, it's not a park. And if you were, if you were, if you're, if you were on a park next to a four-lane road going through your city, good for you. And you want your children playing right there, give me a break. And then to think, talk about the eyesore of I-81. I go to the Veterans Administration Hospital, I come down the hill, I walk underneath that highway, and I can tell you one thing, I would, I would rather be walking under that highway than have my children, or my pet, or my cat run out into a four-lane road and fry in my apartment now. This, if you think that's what you're going to have, a park-like setting, you people are sadly mistaken. You're going to have a four-lane road running through the entire city. And if I still have time to read what I typed here, 13 new intersection traffic lights, a massive increase in traffic for local neighborhoods, traffic that residents, pedestrians, and children will all be negatively affected by. This is the opposite, the opposite of pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. This is a four-lane road going through a city, not a park. The Adams Street exit is on the doorstep of three major hospitals and three ERs. What are they thinking? We are fortunate to have a north, south, east, west highway system that interchanges in the center of central New York. Plans to make the I-81 bypass readily accessible are solid, there are solid plans to have a bypass and to make it accessible. Plans to bring the four-lane I-81 business route down to street level are misguided. And I can tell you that I, I have, I've been affected by I-81. My grandfather and my uncle both had homes on McHale's Street Avenue, if you know where the muffler shop is down in Slina, McHale's Street Avenue. They both lost their homes. If you go over the Brighton Ave exit, you're going over both my uncle and my great uncle and my grandfather's homes, which are no longer there. And I can tell you, to think this is what's going to happen, you guys are really sad. If you go down to Brighton, the Brighton entrance and exit, you try to cross the street there, you'd be on the east side of the street. 30 seconds. 30 seconds. I've got 30 seconds to tell you that there's no crosswalks on Brighton Avenue, or on the Brighton Avenue exit on Slina. If you're crossing from north, going from north to south, or south to north, it's been there for how many years? There's a sidewalk, a sidewalk that go to nowhere. There's no, no light, no crosswalk, no paint, no signs for pedestrians. I'm a pedestrian, I'm here as a pedestrian. I rode a bus here, I don't drive a car, and I can tell you, that's a nightmare that you guys are, that you guys are all supporting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker, I should say, will be Peter King, followed by Maureen Curtin. Peter King, followed by Maureen Curtin.
Good evening. DOT, my name's Peter King, P-E-T-E-R-K-I-N-G. I'm, I've been a Syracuse resident on the southeast side for 20 years, and I just wanted to clarify some comments I made yesterday in your virtual hearing. First of all, I support this community grid alternative. I support also the points made by New York State Civil Liberties Union about environmental justice for city residents living in the shadow of the viaduct. I support Urban Jobs Task Force in calling for a community workforce agreement through a PLA, through a project labor agreement through the SEP 14 Local Hiring and Program, which would give city residents training and then access to jobs on the viaduct project. I think that providing a pathway for city residents into unions, that's a win-win for the local unions as well, and local unions are, I think, a good thing for the workforce. I support Moving People Transportation Coalition in prioritizing moving people, not just vehicles. So including a bus planning is a good idea. I mentioned air quality is a problem along I-81 in the valley and downtown. I also mentioned airflow, nightly airflow down the hill slopes is an environmental forcing function, it's part of nature that farmers are aware of. It's called, sometimes called cold air return, cold air drainage. And I also mentioned local inversions, which can occur in urban centers. And I just wanted to back up here to say that these problems are kind of endemic to most cities built in valleys with a lot of pavement, because the pavement collects heat and re-radiates back, which can sometimes create hotspots and, and air quality problems on still days. And just, so this is not the fault I-81 above the city design, but I-81 is a problem. Now, some of the features in, in the, the community grid design probably would benefit this because they facilitate airflow, and so I think that possibly including some open spaces might be a good idea, but at the same time, you should, I recommend including the, the Land Use Working Group and possible land trust as a way to resolve, to discuss these issues, and I think this should be done openly, and you should, that's why you should discuss air quality openly. And I also recommend working with the City Forestry Plan, which, which is also addressing similar issues in terms of urban heat island. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. King. Next to speak is Maureen Curtin, followed by Sharon Sherman.
My name is Maureen Curtin, spelled M-A-U-R-E-E-N-C-U-R-T-I-N. I reside in the town of Anadaga. I am a board member of the Central New York ACLU and a supporter of the Urban Jobs Task Force. I am also a member of a teachers' union in the region, and I work with some whose families were grievously harmed by the project that brought I-81 through the 15th Ward. In fact, in my recent conversations with them, they have despaired that the DOT and the coordinators and directors on this project will, they will repeat the harm by turning land over to gentrifiers, developers who will profit. So I want to begin by echoing Decadanzil's recommendation, her urgent call to set land aside in a community trust, making community members, residents, the decision-makers, or we will repeat a much, a terrible harm in this community. The next point I want to make is that I want to echo others' calls for equity initiatives in local hiring to include prioritizing city residents, those living in immediate, immediately surrounding suburbs, and those living in census tracts 42 and 53. These hiring initiatives must include those historically disadvantaged by incarceration, lack of childcare, and homelessness. More than this, though, I urge the DOT to hire an independence compliant, independent compliance officer, so local hiring goals are effectively monitored, communicated, and met. That compliance officer should meticulously collect data on workforce hours and demographics, and fully and regularly disclose that data to the public, including the Urban Jobs Task Force. Finally, though I live on the other side of this, the valley, I'm the parent of a seven-year-old who's excitable and likes to run. And when I looked at where the roundabout is, I was there over the weekend, I felt great fear for the safety of the children at MLK Jr. I implore you to protect them by moving that roundabout, so it does not worsen asthma rates that are already three times the average of other schoolchildren in the county, and so that the children who live there can walk and run the neighborhood safe from harm. Thank you.
Next to speak is Sharon Sherman, followed by Jeremy Bossert.
Hi, Sharon, S-H-A-R-O-N, Sherman, S-H-E-R-M-A-N. My name, I'm Sharon Sherman, Executive Director of the Greater Syracuse Tenants Network. The tenant network is a member of the Moving People Transportation Coalition. We enthusiastically support the selection of community grid as the best replacement for I-81. The overwhelming majority of poor people in the city of Syracuse are tenants, and then they cannot afford to own cars. Poor people rely on public transit for their everyday transportation needs. Public transit should be an integral part of the community grid plan, including cutouts for bus pullovers and accommodations for bus rapid transit, BRT, in the future. DOT has listed a goal of this plan, quote, "to maintain access to existing local bus service and enhance transit amenities within the project limits in and around downtown Syracuse." We do not find that goal clearly demonstrated in this plan. In fact, the visual, the video visualization show a BL-81 with only passenger cars. A truer depiction would show buses and, buses and bus amenities along the BL-81. How does the community grid maintain access to local bus transit? We believe the goal should have been not only to maintain, but improve bus transit by the community grid, and we're not exactly clear how that goal got narrowed and restricted, and we feel that that is also not the direction of current transportation policies or what the federal government would be looking for. The future of our transportation system must put greater reliance on bus transit to avoid unnecessary use of passenger vehicles and to lower the impact of fossil fuels in our environment. We are tired of plans made for transportation infrastructure, and then, as an afterthought, the Bus Transit Authority must work its way through the plans to see how the routes can accommodate the changed infrastructure. We understand that our Centro has historically not taken a lead. Their attitude has historically been, we will be, we will be defensive afterwards, and we think you should be forcing them to articulate. I spoke to several people there today at the press conference, and you know what? Once again, Centro is not going to speak for the needs of public transportation during this process, and I think it's up to you, not to me privately all the time, but to ask them, and I ask our elected officials, to have Centro commenting critically about how community grid is good or bad. And we just, one more sentence, we want to see an analysis of the impact of community grid on bus transit in Syracuse included in this plan. It is not there now that I could find. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. Next to speak is Jeremy Bossert, followed by Ian Jagert-Hook.
Hi, I am Jeremy Bossert. First name Jeremy, J-E-R-E-M-Y, last name Bossert, B-O-S-S-E-R-T. Destiny USA gets 26 million people per year, COVID aside, which is 30% more than Walt Disney World's Magic Kingdom in Orlando, the most heavily attended theme park on the planet. Yet we have not seen a whole lot of development in that area. What I had an idea to do was to test the shared-use paths that are proposed underneath the 690 and West Street overpass as a test bed to try and finally link that to the city via the Anadaga Creek Walk, almost as if it's a San Antonio River Walk analog. What I was thinking was to move the path right down to the water instead of isolated with, and above the water as it is in the proposal, use a lot of that remaining open land and the parking lots as room for commercial development. But I know the parking lots are still extensively used by existing businesses. So what I was thinking to give fair compensation for that was to acquire that land, use a small portion of that land to build a robotic parking garage of equal capacity for the existing business, turn that garage back to the existing business, use the remaining land as commercial development, which would be required to have, which the new businesses, should they want, should build something there, would have to have a robotic parking garage under their own dime for maximum efficiency. dime for maximum efficiency. Most of this would be outside of the scope of the I-81 project, but that little section could be used as a possible test bed. This could be a massive link to Destiny, this could be a massive tourism magnet in and of itself, like it is in San Antonio, and the, and this could also even be used as a link for the people of the west side to have possible opportunities for farther down the line, close to Armory Square in Temple Street. And I thought it was a great idea to really link everything together and to use that spot, since it's already being developed, slightly modify it to see if the potential of this idea. Worst-case scenario, it's
Thirty seconds.
the path is simply moved down to the waterline, and then add ADA-friendly ramps at all-access points where streets currently cross over. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The last card I have is Ian, I believe it's Hook, is it Jagert or Jarrett Hook?
It's, it's not your fault, it's, my handwriting is terrible, so, you know, it's okay. My name is Ian J. Abbott-Hook, A-B-B-O-T-T hyphen H-O-K. You did your best with my handwriting, thank you. It's kind of weird, isn't it? So many of the lines about this issue actually are very clearly drawn. People want the community grid, and with good reason. This is a great opportunity presented by the DOT. The fact that we even have this option is incredible. Historically, this city has been gutted by cars for the past century, and now we have something to rebuild. This issue will define Syracuse for the next 100 years. The next century will be defined by what we do now. So we have to do it right. So, since the community wants this grid, even the government wants this grid, the DOTs recommended this grid, please continue with your efforts towards making this happen for all of us, even for my son, for our future, and please maintain the, the spirit of this goal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments. I have a, a stack of cards here of people who submitted cards saying they'd like to speak, and they may have left, or maybe they didn't hear me because they left the room for momentarily. So I'm going to read these names one more time. I have Patrona Jones Rouser. Please just stand up if you hear your name. Donna Curtin. Giovanni Basile. Ron Van Norstrand. Hassan Bloodworth. Kayla Johnson. Jeffrey, and it looks like Lima, could be, could be Lerner. Is there a Jeffrey? No. Kathy Downing. Okay. Everyone who has filled out a speaker card has now spoken. I appreciate everyone's comments and how polite and orderly everyone is during this process. And on behalf of the DOT and the Federal Highway Administration, I want to thank everyone for coming out to comment. That concludes this public hearing.